Morning, everyone. Welcome to the Monday meeting. I hope you all had a good fourth and got through the weekend, it looks like. Uh, under budget, we'll just go down the list. It looks like Marin Corrections. Oh, yeah, Kathy usually.
You can wing it.
Yeah, I know Kathy makes the reports. Is she? We can give her a minute, yeah, unless you, unless you have something you want to talk about otherwise.
How's the AC at the jail? How's the AC at the jail? You mean, it's got the, uh, the, our PAIO treatment?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is the, is the jail section isolated from the office sections AC wise? Yeah.
We used to have some issue even in our new administration building in, in the hot weather, you know, we'd put a sprinkler up there to try and keep it cooled down. And here's the explanation we got is, well, we don't have enough weather up here for you to get the Arizona conditioners.
Uh, yeah, the counter, when I bought a house here, when I first came up, I was. So the counter that when I came up here, I assumed people knew how to build in the rain, in the rainy environment. Yeah, at all kinds of problems.
Sounds like Kathy's running a little behind. Is there any, um, other departments that have stuff other than just the budget review? Not seeing. Did she give me any, any of her, her charts, Marin?
Yes, I have the charts in front of me.
You can take a look at them.
I pretty much understand them, but I did not put these reports together.
Oh, that's all right. I was going to muddle my way through. Good.
Sorry I'm late. Kathy Funk Baxter, Finance Director. Um, we'll have handouts in a minute. We're, we're having some printing issues. But for the Corrections Department, really this, the quarterly updates, finance, um, we didn't see anything, um, as far as significant variances from budget. They're on track for their budget and I don't believe there's anything really to report, um, as far as anything unusual.
Nothing unusual.
Yeah, and this is the quarterly update. This will be the quarterly update for Corrections.
So normally we would see this quarterly unless there were something unusual, in which case it's always.
And I'm still going to provide it, provide the financial reports to you on a quarterly basis, but I want to just, I will just verbally report to you. Uh, we won't go over all the numbers. I'll just report to you if there's any anomalies or anything that's, um, requiring a budget amendment.
I should have said at the beginning, Commissioner Weber is not in today, so.
Okay.
So you're stuck with the two of us. You sent me the email on the, on the Kroger. Do you want to just update? I don't know if Commissioner Mortensen was
Okay.
On that or not?
Yeah, so on the Kroger, um, the Janson, uh, was on the portal as far as the participation agreement before. Um, the Kroger is not out there yet, but, um, David sent me the paperwork and so we'll be getting, we'll be getting the Kroger, um, participation signed and, and to you. I just don't think it's going to be as easy as the Janson when she was on the portal and you could do it, so. So it's moving along, but just haven't. And then there's another payment for the distributor. Um, I believe that Gina had already told you all about, there'll be a July payment on the distributor. That's the one that's over 17 years. And, um, that's will be like $177,000. And that will be the last payment for this year on the distributor. They're just doing annual payment. And the Janson was the one that was a lump sum, was like an over $900,000 and it was a lump sum.
And it's, it's came in?
It came in, uh, in, I think either June, very end of June.
Towards the end of June.
Mm-hmm, yep. So, so the numbers she reported to you, um, you know, were accurate, um, but we'll have one more payment on the distributor this month. And I don't know what the Kroger payment will be, so.
Just as an aside, that, uh, it's very difficult now for physicians to describe, to prescribe properly. And, uh, that is really a problem. Even this week, I have some grandkids from San Diego and, uh, prescriptions don't move very easily anymore. It's, it's certainly unfriendly to normal doctor-patient relationship. And that actually has me quite annoyed, upset. That's all we need is a bureaucrat to be between you and your doctor.
Anything else on the?
No, I'll hand you your financials.
Who is Kroger? The, are they the parent of, of any supermarkets around here?
Isn't Kroger the parent of Fred Meyer? Isn't Fred Meyer part of the Kroger group now?
Yeah, thank you. Did you mean to give me all of these?
Yes.
There's jail, general fund, jail, general fund, jail, general fund. How do I tell between them? I'll keep one.
Yeah. Um, the only question I, I would ask Kathy, just to kind of, I know part of some of the stuff we do over at the jail comes out of that mental, mental health tax. Are we on, on target on that?
Yes, um, they're, they were budgeted for, uh, basically a status quo on their mental health tax. And so their trans, it's a transfer in to the jail. And that transfer in happens based upon their submission of reimbursement. And so they're, we're utilizing, of course, our fund balance.
Yeah, but it's all the stuff looks like it's going along what we thought it would do. We're not seeing any big spikes or anything. Yeah.
No.
I'm Marin Fox, Director of Corrections. The only, um, thing I was going to share is on, uh, revenue. Uh, we're a little, it looks like a little behind on, uh, goods and services that represents the payments we get from the cities for, uh, housing their misdemeanor inmates. Uh, that's representing four months. So the reason it's behind is just, uh, timing, billing, timing and, and
I mean.
Receiving the payment.
On that, we get paid quarterly?
We bill monthly, but just with
Just.
Just with working in government, things take time to get payments back from cities. Sometimes there's a little bit of delay.
Have you seen any change in volumes with the, the, the changes in the, the laws?
We saw a very large change in volume last year in misdemeanors. Uh, it's still, still up, but, but tapering, tapering down somewhat.
Cause I know the cities were concerned, concerned about it.
Right, yeah, their, their bills doubled, tripled in, in some cases, but that's based on how many people they're booking into jail.
Yeah.
That was all I had.
Good. Just a couple of questions. Uh, when do you have to renegotiate the, uh, health insurance or the health care contract again?
We just signed an extension. It'll be in three years.
That was three months ago or something like that?
Something like that. They, um,
And that's a year long?
Three percent increase for the next, uh, two years, so we went.
Three percent for the next two years?
So we went ahead and signed the amendment to extend it and then we'll go out to bed at the.
And that's all in the budget then?
It is, yes.
We shouldn't expect a surprise there.
No.
I forget what my other question was. Sorry.
That's probably good too, because, um, there's not a lot of insurance providers in your arena.
Correct. There are two, two large companies that provide the service.
There, there are some that quite frankly don't want your business in Washington.
Right, not in Washington. Yes, that is true.
Yeah, a, as a cost escalation, three percent is marvelous.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Part of the reason I recommended that we perform that.
So for a fleeting moment, I remembered a question. So, uh, the way you compute the daily charge is kind of using history of the previous 12 months or something like that?
Correct.
And so if you had a substantial step up in the current year from the past year due to, uh, the municipalities or the Department of Corrections, uh, your budget would then show a spike up. Is that right?
If their daily rate increases?
Yeah.
Yes, uh, the con, we're negotiating the contract with the cities right now. Uh, the previous contract. Yes. The con, we're negotiating the contract with the cities right now. The previous contract had a five percent cap. So if we, if our budget increases higher than that, we were capped at five percent. That's also the cap the state gives us for DOC. It's a five percent increase every year.
Yeah, that one you don't have much control over. The other one, your costs go up more than five percent, right?
Right, so we're still negotiating that contract and, and we're changing the way we approach the daily rate as well.
If you have a cap of five percent, is that a cap on all-in costs or is that a cap on some portions of the cost?
Um, historically, that would have been all costs. It would, basically, the, the formula was use the previous year's budget and the average daily population. So if you have a, in COVID, like we dropped down to seventy, obviously, with no cap, that would just blow that rate up into a, a really big number. So we're looking, we're changing the formula to two parts where some of it will be fixed, based on fixed cost at capacity. And the inmate-related costs will be a second portion based on average daily population, which will even, even it out.
And just to understand what your constraints are, a, do you, do folks in the city have a legal requirement to use your jail? Or can they, could they hypothetically contract with the jail in Lewis County?
Currently, under our current contract, they cannot contract out. They cannot house inmates in other facilities. That's another negotiation point as well.
Is a point of negotiation.
For example, Lewis County contracts some of their inmates out to other facilities because they're at capacity and Clark County has no room. So it, it becomes a little bit more, you're having to go to like Yakima, so it becomes a little more complicated.
Trying to, well, your, your population is primarily, what, three months is the maximum there, there? I mean, the, the peak of, peak of the number of people in is no more than three months. In other words, you could only contract out the nine, the, the ones who are gonna be there for the whole year.
Or the ones that are sentenced. You're not gonna, can't contract out typically people that still have court appearances.
Yeah.
Because they need to come, come back.
Okay. Thanks, Marin. Rhodes. It's, it's hard not to give Mr. Sean a hard time since I, ever since I've been out at the gun range and found out he's quite, quite the shot. I mean, dead eye roe over there.
That, I always treat him with utmost respect.
Yeah.
Even when he doesn't deserve it.
Okay, Kathy Funt Baxter, Finance Director. On Rhodes, as far as their financials, their revenues actually for taxes are ahead of our targets. And for prior year and for current year. And then on intergovernmental, we're a bit behind on our projections there as far as target compared to we're above last year's number, but we're below our target. And that's primarily due to, and we're going to be probably doing a budget amendment later on those as far as projects. And so we expect to do that probably in the third or fourth quarter, amend the budget down on intergovernmental. That will also have an impact on capital expenses. They will go down a corresponding amount as well. And then goods and services, we are pretty much above last year this time. And right on track for, actually, actually, we're ahead on the budget. And so that's on the revenue side. I, and then on the expenditure side, basically the personnel expenses doesn't, currently for the current year, doesn't include all of June payroll yet. That'll be posting. Second half of June will be posting very soon, probably today. And of course, our capital is behind target, but that's because we're going to, our reimbursement contracts, we're gonna be amending that. And then that's really, and then negative on debt service has to do with the twenty twenty-three subscription-based transaction that, that was reversed in January of twenty-four. So basically, I don't think, there's really not a tremendous amount of variance that we're concerned about on the expenditure side. Other than we're gonna be amending the capital line item. So. Thanks. I'll let Sean take over from there.
Yes, so.
Governmental is the only one that really catches my eye, cause we're quite a bit behind on that. We're about twenty.
And that's directly tied to our capital projects. The intergovernmental also includes all of our grant dollars. So as we've talked about, you know, the Cloverdale Road, our Dyke Road and Garlock Road are three big projects that have been pushed off pretty far this year into next year. And that's about ten million dollars a project right there. So that we will be seeing a budget amendment on those coming in to remove those from the twenty-four budget mostly and into the twenty-five budget.
Is it fair to say it's more of a timing thing than, than revenue thing?
Yeah, with, you know, Cloverdale, we had some right-of-way issues and the tire dust issues we had talked about.
Yeah. Bicycles.
And then on the Dyke Road reconstruction, that's about a two-point-one million dollar project. We're still waiting on the Corps of Engineers to get back on that one. And then our Garlock Road culvert replacement, we have some right-of-way issues that we're working on there still. On the revenue side though, our timber excise tax and our leasehold excise tax all came in above what the expectations were. And then the Treasurer's Office has been doing a great job on investment earnings as well. And so because we've had some of those setbacks on the capital project side, we've pivoted on our maintenance projects during the budget amendment here just a week ago. Last week, we added in, you know, a two-point-one million dollar overlay into the budget that wasn't originally there. And then we'll see spending for our chip seal program and our striping programs. We see about five million dollar spend here in the next month, month and a half for our, our annual maintenance projects there. So that'll pick up some of those services we, we're kinda lacking on when we do the comparison here.
On the intergovernmental revenue, are there any uncertainties there?
The, the biggest uncertainty, of course, and we've talked about in the past, is the, the motor vehicle fuel tax and the ongoing income coming from that. We have seen that decreasing over the years, but that'd be the main item, I'd say, of uncertainty.
Any of the other project plans are, are hard in. It's just a matter of the timing.
Correct, yeah.
And tell me again about the, about the fuel tax?
So the motor vehicle fuel tax, every time we pump a gas, a gallon, gasoline, there's a tax on that.
Yeah.
And the county gets a certain percentage of that back.
And that's been going down?
Yes, sir. We saw it go down.
Includes the, the taxes from, from trucks, all fuel?
I believe that's all fuel, if I remember correctly, Susan?
Yes, Susan Eugenius County Engineer. Yes, that is all fuel, but the last few sessions, when they've added dollars to our fuel tax, it has been nickel packages, so they go directly to projects. So even though the fuel tax itself has gone up, we are not getting any, any more because we get that small percentage of what is a direct reimbursement to the counties and the state.
Just a fixed amount?
Yes, of a certain amount of the, let's say there's twenty-five cents of fuel tax, there's five cents of it that's broken up by the percentage. And then the other twenty cents is project-directed. So the last few fuel packages, they have not increased that five cents that goes, that's the direct distribution. They've increased it project-specific.
Plus the, and I don't remember the figures, but listening to, to Crab talk one day, a lot of the tax they get goes to pay debt.
Yes.
So then very little is left, left over, although they've amassed this big pot of money from the, the carbon tax they added. I would suggest they pay off the debt, but they won't listen.
As long as you're up there, what, what are the numbers roughly about miles traveled? Are we, if you aggregate all the miles, are we up or down?
The miles that people are actually traveling? I would say we're probably up. I don't know that for sure. That would be my guess based on how people are traveling, especially now that we're, I mean, obviously miles were way down in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. They started coming back up. I think we are probably back up or, and above what we were in twenty nineteen.
I, I think it is, and I'm trying to remember, cause, because the last legislative session, it's in there, it'll be in there again about the, the mileage tax. The per mile tax and, and the monitoring. And when they were presenting that at one of the meetings I was at, I think that the mileage trend was up. They're, they're doing mileage trends is up and revenue is, is here, we need to do something type things.
Right, the usual. What, what puzzles me about that is it, I, I think I intuitively or intrinsically, whatever the right word is, from observation on the, on the highways, it seems like traffic is unabated from before. Before meaning two dollars a gallon or two fifty a gallon to four dollars a gallon. And I'm like, do we have that extra money lying around? I didn't think the people in general did. There's a message in there, but I don't understand it.
I think people are, I still have to go to work. I still wanna take my vacation. It's less hassle than flying. Trains aren't cheap, especially in this part of the country. All of those things.
But I, I think most people, like you're in the gas crunch way back before, about the time you were born, people would combine trips. I gotta go to the store. Do you wanna go to the store? Talking to your neighbor. And I haven't seen any sense of consolidation of travel that way. It's the same way I, I find the affordable housing crisis kinda strange when you can't afford a house by yourself. You share. I grew up on the backside of a house and, and that's what you did if you couldn't afford your own. We don't seem inclined to do that anymore. Anyhow.
Th- this is off the, the subject here, but I'm, I'm this afternoon, I, I'm down in Vancouver and I meet with Army Corps and Department of Ecology. They invited me down to talk about Toodle out there. So I just wanted to, what I wanted to tell them is we're looking at alternative road and I, I, and I don't know where we're, I know you started on looking at some of the feasibility of that, to do that, but the engineer, and then if we, if we have to build that road, the other one just goes away. We're not, I'm not, if we build a new road, then the other road, it's gone. And so I think we're talking, we're, we're talking about seven fifty, seven fifty million?
Yes, that's why we really, the initial thumbnail was that, about that estimate.
Okay, thanks. Don't worry, you'll still be, get to go to the firing range. Finance. Everybody's budget should be in line. It should be yours, right?
Okay, so this is a, this is a quarterly, well, this is actually a monthly. We do monthly updates for the entire county during this session. And so the first, the first area is revenue versus expense. And so we're showing twenty twenty-four revenues, twenty twenty-four expenses for some of our major departments. General Fund, our revenue is a little over twenty-nine million, twenty-nine point six million, basically. Our expenses as of right now are thirty-one point eight million, so for a deficit of two-point-two million as of right now. Our county road, which we just presented, is, revenue is about almost twelve million, eleven point, yeah, twelve million. And then our expenses as of right now are six point six for a surplus of five point three. And then our Health Department, revenue is two point one, almost two point two million with expenses at one point five million for a surplus of seven hundred thousand. Building and planning is revenues one point six million and expenses as of right now are one point three million for a surplus of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. So we're pretty much on track. And in some cases, we're, we're sitting very well on our surplus as of right now.
We got, I, is it fair to say that when I look at the, and I'm just talking, let's just talk general fund, I think the expenses are in line with what we expected?
Yes.
Is that fair to say?
Yeah, and I have another slide to show that.
Okay, cause I, I think what we're struggling with here is tax receipts, sales tax receipts?
Yes, and I have some updated information on that as well.
But if that continues, then we need to make some adjustments on the other side. I know you've been thinking about that, yeah.
So my next slide is just kind of at a glance, some of the rev, major revenues. I added a couple of lines in there that I needed to delete, but I was, I was going too quickly on this slide. So the really, the one is real and personal property tax. So for the General Fund, we budgeted nineteen point eight million. We budgeted a little lower than previous year on that because we were adjusting, trying to get it closer to actuals. So we're at fifty-six percent collection of those revenues as of June. And last year at this time, we were at fifty-one percent. And the county road on personal property tax, we budgeted thirteen point seven million, a little bit higher than we did the year before. And we're pretty much in alignment with the year before. We're, as far as collections, seven point six million. And last year at the same time, seven point six million. And then the sales tax, while we're behind the amounts from last year, we still are on track with our budget. And so remember, there's a two-month lag on sales tax. So we're at three point four million and last year at this time, we're at three point eight million. So a little bit behind last year's, but I believe we're on track with how I budgeted. Because last year our actuals came in at about twelve, twelve million, a little over twelve million. And so I budgeted for eleven point nine million. So I budgeted conservatively.
So if I take the three point four four and multiply by four, that's what I should see and that comes in about right then?
Right, right on budget. So I believe we're gonna come in on budget. We're just not trending well compared to last year. And so I have another slide to walk you through by, month by month on that.
Okay.
On mental health tax, this is the one where the tax only went through the month of March. So we had our budget at eight hundred thousand, basically, eight oh seven. We've brought in year-to-date, seven hundred and forty-five thousand. Last year, when you try to look at it, it's not gonna compare because of the fact that that was for a full year, which was two-point-four million budget. And we brought in a million dollars. And we brought in a million dollars as of this point last year. And then, um, I added a couple of other, um, lines that y'all may have not seen before in some of our presentations, um, for the county, but, um, motor fuel is kind of ironic. You ask about the motor vehicle fuel tax for roads. Um, I'm showing you this number. We're at, um, we budgeted almost two million dollars. Um, little less than what we had budgeted for last year. Um, and we're, we brought in six hundred thirty-nine thousand, but that's a little bit higher than what we did this point in time last year. It was six hundred thirty thousand. And this too, I believe, is on a two-month lag of when we get paid this tax.
Oh, this is a two-month?
Yes. So, um, and.
We're actually ahead then?
Yeah, it looks like we're right on track. Um, and you've got your.
Can, can we go on a two-month leg to giving it to them?
Yeah. And then the P U D, privileged tax, um, this is one I thought, since it's two million dollars, I would show it, um, on this presentation as well. We're ahead of last year at this time. Um, that, I think this one only comes in once during the year. So, um, we've exceeded budget, so. And then timber excise tax, um, um, I'm, I'm showing this one as well because we have for the general fund and the county road. And for the road fund, we're, um, well over budget, um, at seven forty-six. And well over what, what it was last year at this point in time. So. So this is just at a glance. And the totals don't match because I, I, I didn't include every single line that was on here. If it was, um, not significant, I didn't include the line, but the totals, um, I didn't adjust the totals, so.
By that, you mean if I add up the columns?
Yeah, if you added that column up, it's not gonna add up.
Strange, isn't it?
Yeah, sorry. I didn't have time to change my totals. We're already, I was cutting, pasting, um, into the PowerPoint. Sales tax is the next one, um, that I have and it's, this is the one you're used to seeing where we're showing every, every month's collection compared to last month's collections. Um, and this is where, um, we're currently below, um, our, the point in time for last year. So anywhere from two percent below on a month to as much as twenty percent below comparison. The next one is the document recording fees. And for this one, we have two slides, one that's the actual revenue. And so, um, this one you're seeing that we're below some months and above other months. And so this is only through the month of May. Um, I don't have the numbers yet. This comes from the auditor's office. They prepared this for us. And, um, so this is, but in total, it's, it's not drastically off where we were last year at this point in time, when you look at it. The percentages. And then the transaction numbers, um, trend pretty much with the revenue. We, most of the months, we're just slightly above what we, where we were at this point last year. Um, except for the month of March, we were down in a number of recording fees, doc recording fees. Any questions on doc recording fees?
Well, just kind of a little bit surprising because it's, it's so a lot of dependence on, on real estate transactions, so. I mean, it's, it's nice seeing it still up there.
Nice seeing that we're not drastically reduced.
Actually, do you know, uh, what the, what the breakdown of the documents that are recorded? Like, how much do we collect for real estate transactions versus other transactions?
No, I don't, I don't know, but I can, if you'd like.
Carolyn gets that, so.
Yeah, if Carolyn's on, maybe. Or I could find that out for you. Okay, going on to the property taxes, um, I'm showing you as of this point in time, I have two slides. One is for twenty twenty-four. And this shows you that, um, you know, year-to-date receipts for the twenty twenty-four levies, property tax levies, uh, a general fund, uh, we've already collected eleven million dollars through June, um, thirtieth. And so we're sitting at an ending balance of eight point six still to collect. Um, this also shows you all the previous year's, uh, balances, um, on collections. And then comparing it to this point in time, the next slide shows you twenty twenty-three. We're a loo-, we're ahead on our collections just slightly, uh, because last year, at this point in time, we had collected ten point nine million. And this year we're collecting a little over eleven million. And so our balance, um, amazingly is almost exactly the same on amount still to be collected. This year's compares very nicely to last year, eight point six compared to eight point six. So. And typically we collect, once the year is over, about ninety-nine percent of our, um, property tax, assessments are collected. Any other questions on that? And then I, I listed for you some of the projects that I'm working on in twenty twenty-four.
The other comment on that, that last column, I, the eight point six and then the eight point six. And then compared to the bottom, what I'm getting at is the delinquent amount hasn't really changed much.
No.
To me, that's, that, that's good. I mean, I, I wouldn't want to see that start growing like, like crazy, so.
Right. And that's why I thought this slide was important to show we're very stable on our collections of our property taxes.
So are, are you assuming like the hundred and sixty-two thousand is, uh, tax that was never collected, but then it's a delinquent tax is what you'd call it then?
Well, that's what I'm, I'm calling it, because your property taxes are due in the, in the, like, April and October, right?
Right.
So if you're in two thousand twenty-three, those are people that didn't make those payments for some reason or another.
Yeah.
And on down, and you see it goes all the way back to two thousand sixteen, very small amount in two thousand sixteen, but it goes back to six, two thousand sixteen. So I, if, if we started seeing that block of stuff grow from three hundred thousand to four to five to six, then that's kind of a concern, but it, it's.
Yeah, so in twenty-three, your twenty-two taxes, which were, would be delinquent taxes, there were a hundred and sixty-two thousand ending balance at this point in time. So as of right now, if you look at the twenty twenty-two line, it's gone down to seventy-seven thousand. So you've collected, um,
Yeah.
quite a bit of the, the delinquent taxes from last year, so.
I'm just pointing out that, that's not a negative indicator. It's, it, it could be a negative indicator if you, if it was really racing the other way.
These are the sl- slides that I'll be showing, you know, pretty much every single month. Looking at property taxes, revenues at a glance, and, um, looking at our expenditures as well. Okay, that concludes my finance presentation.
Any questions? I, I appreciate it.
Are you ready for building and planning?
Yeah.
I think they're on the list. Okay, on building and planning, um, on their revenues, we're, um, they're slightly below target projections, um, on their licensing and permits, but it's only slightly. It's not material. Um, goods and services is above their target on their budget, um, and compared to prior year. So there's n- no indication of anything that, um, and again, this is a quarterly, um, presentation for them. And on the expenses, their personnel are below our budget target and our comparison, but that's because the second half of June payroll hasn't posted yet. And other than that, I'm not concerned about, um, their expenditure areas, so. And again, we'll be monitoring, um, monitoring this on a quarterly basis.
On the previous presentation, it sounded like collectively building and planning was ahead by three hundred thousand or so?
Yes, on the finance.
Yes.
Now, as far as a surplus, revenues versus expenses.
Right. So it, it, I, it takes me a while to digest this. If, if the revenues are down, that means, mean the expenses are considerably faster down. Or notice.
Yeah.
No, um, if the revenues are down, we just wouldn't be taking in as many building permits, but they've maintained.
Right, but if your revenue's down and you have a surplus.
The revenues are up. We have one point six million in revenues and one point three in expenses.
Yeah.
And then on community long-range planning, um, really it's, um, there isn't any significant revenues that have been budgeted there. And, um, so we're just, we'll just be monitoring that. Um, and, and then, um, on the expenditures, the second half again, second half of the June payroll hasn't posted yet. So that's why it's, the actuals are below the targets and comparison. And then, um, on services, their services expenses are lower than this point in time last year and lower, um, than where we target them, so. I don't, I don't see anything unusual. This one typically only varies if they get a, um, a grant or contract.
Not a big deal, but just refresh my memory on the first one I'm looking at. F T E, two thousand, last year we had one open, this year we don't. Is that a position we just decided you didn't need?
Yes, and we.
That's what I.
Yeah, we did some movement and we, um, I gave up a position. And this year, uh, um, we have an employee being paid through the fifteenth of this month. And then, um, we're regrouping actually this week to see what we're going to do with that position. Um, we believe it's needed and we kind of have a different, um, idea of ma- how we might, uh, refill that position.
More just refreshing me. Thank you.
And that's all I have for the, uh, financial statements. And then Tracy has anything she wants to add?
I, commissioners, I don't have much other than good morning, happy Monday. Um, I have our monthly reports up here. If, um, anybody in the public wants to see them, we've maintained our numbers there. It's been kind of nice. We've not really seen much of a drop-off. So, um, June is still, was still hopping, so, um, well, the numbers show, you know, the revenues are still coming in, so.
Do you maintain a suggestion box?
We do.
And you have a complaint box or is that the suggestion box?
It's a suggestion box, yeah.
What kind of numbers are you seeing in there?
We don't get many. We get a lot of, um, kudos to staff for their help. Um, so-and-so explained a process or took time to help them. They were very patient with them. We get a lot of the, um, like, uh, thank yous, which is nice.
Yeah, it sounds like we're making headway. I don't receive complaints, no.
We have, we have our frequent flyers that they complain about everything, but that's okay. You know, we just try to explain the process and, and move through.
You're never going to eliminate them.
No.
You know, but I, I think the, uh, and whatever you call it, where you sit down with them beforehand and explain.
The staff consults, those are huge help.
If people take advantage of those, have been
Yep.
major help in.
Well, we just kind of give them a path forward and we make it to where their path works for them. Yeah, we truly, truly try. Staff truly takes a lot of time. And we bring in, uh, public work staff, environmental health. We try to kind of do a wraparound approach to where they have all the information they need before they start their process. Some take advantage, some don't, and, and they get angry along the way.
What's the latest on the private roads?
Uh, we go to, uh, our building and planning advisory committee meets next, uh, a week from Thursday. I think it's the eighteenth. And at two o'clock, um, Susan's going to present, uh, the new, uh, version of what the B PAC and the public had kind of, uh, requested. And so she's going to bring that forward. So we're anxious to see it. We've not seen it yet. I smile. So we're curious, we're ready to see, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any regulation changes that are coming down that are going to have severe impact on us? We've talked about some.
Uh, there's, the seasonal burn ban will be in effect on July fifteenth, if not sooner. And I think Mike Wilson was waiting for, uh, call, but nothing's been made yet. So I think we're still on for July fifteenth unless something changes. I know that today and tomorrow is supposed to be hot, but then it's supposed to drop a little bit, but it usually goes in effect on the fifteenth.
And, uh, the natural gas ban or however that goes, is that actually in place?
I'm going to turn that over to Mike. He sighed.
Morning, Mike Wilson, building official. There is a, um, I'm sure you've seen, uh, signatures of wanted at various locations to combat that very topic. There currently isn't a ban implemented in the building code for natural gas. It's just very challenging to make use of it. Um, but seeing on the rise and that this is a very possible scenario, there are mechanisms in place now to combat that effort. So, uh, in fact, I signed one at Walmart the other day.
Yeah. Because I, 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 I hope we are not genuflecting to stupidity like that.
Pardon me?
I hope we're not genuflecting to stupidity like that. In other words, if somebody's building a house, we, we should not tolerate, uh, something that says you can't use natural gas.
No, no, we, um, our place in this is to be informative with understanding that these are rules and regulations that are passed down by legislature state of Washington. Uh, to be helpful, you know, we're firm, but we're fair. And as I talked to the inspectors this morning, again, uh, that, that is their position in this, not to be an obstruction, to be an asset in the process. Watching an interesting video over the weekend, it's an older video podcast, Adam Corolla and Gavin Newsom. And, uh, they went off, the, the discussion went off from Corolla, who used to be a contractor, about the process of building and planning and the nonsense. about the process of building and planning and the nonsense and so forth and the obstruction. And of course Gavin Newsom just nodded his head and agreed with everything he said, not knowing anything about it. But the big takeaway was this from Carolla's perspective is the obstruction that building and planning departments create. And they become this monolithic tunnel vision, you know, agents of the bureaucracy, in which case they don't assist those who are the customer. And we try and emphasize that, you know, firm but fair. Seek remedies where you can be helpful. There's the letter of the code, then there's the intent of the code. You know, if you can present something that is a viable alternative, let's take a look at it. One of Carolla's points he just would not let go of was air gaps on dishwashers. Those are little devices located above the countertop to prevent backflow into the dishwasher. And he, his example presented was that the manufacturer had designed such a dishwasher that did not require the air gap. It was built into the design. And yet the particular building official or department, or whatever the case is where this was located, refused to accept that, simply because the code says you shall have this. It's like, well, the designer has understood this requirement and has designed a way around it. And the department refused to accept it. That is a perfect example of the reputation that some building departments have. Not willing to, you know, look beyond the codebook, raise their eyes and see that there are alternatives available. Let's make use of them. So, and that's the message, the big takeaway I've delivered to the inspectors and staff, plans, examiners, is firm but fair, but you know, keep your mind open, things do change. And if we can assist someone to finding a better way to accomplish what they need to do, let's do it.
Yeah, that's very much to the credit of your department. Let me ask it in a, let me ask a follow-up to it, which is pretty point blank. I'm going to come to you with plans for my house, including a gas stove. Do I have a problem?
No. Now, the code, as it's currently written, will ask you to, or require that you trade this for that, you know?
Oh, so it's not like I can put a gas stove.
Oh, you can do it.
Without buying something elsewhere that I may not want.
There may be some energy conservation methods of materials and so forth that they'll implement to offset your desire to use the gas. You know, they're achievable, but the complaint I received from the, from the public is that they tend to be expensive.
It can be expensive, excessive.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's a difference between having to do something that actually is beneficial for you versus having to do something that's just political football.
Yeah. Can I?
No comment.
Make a request of you guys at some point in time. I was, last Woodland City Council I sit in on Travis Goddard did a presentation on international building codes. And I thought it was interesting because it's on how it come, came about and stuff. Now, his, his take on it would be different than my take on why it come about, but I thought it was good information for, when you just hear the title, I think you think something totally different than, than what it, what it is and how it applies and bleeds down to the states and bleeds down to us. So I wouldn't mind seeing something that, if you wouldn't mind putting together, and you may be able to even steal Travis's slides. I just think it'd be good for the public to kind of hear some of that. I, I, I thought it was interesting to understand. I didn't. You know, I would take issue with, with some of the reasons why they did it, but, but that, that's another, either here nor there. I think it's just good information for people to have.
I can get ahold of Travis and see what they had, and we can present something from Cowlet County side.
Yeah.
Yeah. Gladly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. One miscellaneous, let me take care of real quick, because I forgot to do it last week. Commissioner Mortensen currently sits on a disability board. That board comes up for renewal in September, and I'm suggesting that we just, if he was willing to do it, to ask him to, to sit on that board through the end of the year. We, we as commissioners in January or February, I forget.
In January.
We take a look at all that stuff anyway and divvying up, and I don't see really a need to, if you're willing to do it, to, to change and just.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
But, but after December, no.
He said they don't meet much, so you could just call in, you could.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I'll have clerk let me know that you'll, you'll stay on that. Anything else? Well, we're at 10, so we might as well just move right into agenda items. And you're right there.
I know, that's why I didn't move. The only thing I have on the agenda tomorrow is the C-Pacer program, and the, it's the public hearing at 9:45. I have sent Dean the link so he can log on and watch from afar.
Think he's going to be here.
I, I figured he would be. And this is the Commercial Property Assess Clean Energy and Resiliency Program. It is, the eligibility includes privately owned, commercial, agricultural, industrial, multifamily housing, five units or more property that is owned by any type of business, corporation, individual, or nonprofit. It's nothing that county will hold. County's not making any money on it. We are nothing, we are offering this program, and they contact, right now there's three lenders that do it. And they can just get better financing if the county as a whole offers this program. So I believe the, the person that originally had asked for this, he's doing a project inside city limits of Woodland, and he's just wanting the ability to access this additional financing. The county's not holding anything, we're not offering any money or lending, it's just the program we offer. And we will be the seventh county in the state to offer it. Thurston County has offered it through the Board of Commissioners Office. They don't have any applications. They've never processed one, and Clark has processed two. So.
Yeah, it's not widely used.
No.
And we are allowed to charge to cover our costs.
We are.
Yeah.
So it's.
It's not an expense to.
No, it's $500 for them to apply, and then we can charge 1% of the, 1% of their project, a minimum of $2,500 and then a, a cap of $15,000. So that's all we can collect of the whole entire thing. And that basically, it's the charge for staff.
So I, I did want to wax a little philosophically on this, that, because, and, and I'm not, it's not particular that I expect this to change, this particular, it was a decision made before. So the, 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 the way government does things, it's, everything is a special category, a special set aside of some kind. And as long as we, the public, continue to opt in for this advantage or that advantage, this will continue and they'll buy us, and we have been bought and not paid for for a long time. And the not paid for is really the, is really the danger. There's, the, the, the price tag is all over the place from, what if we could have a law that allowed you to do this on Tuesday but not Wednesday? Now I can get in. All kinds of nonsense like that, so. Any grants that, anything that interferes with the normal transaction between two consenting adults, or you know, two consenting enterprises, is, is doomed. It's not a good thing. It may take a long time to manifest itself, but we continue to spiral down with special programs. So I, I would normally, and in this case I do say, no, we don't need yet another category. You don't need, building and planning doesn't need to be aware of yet another detail they have to take into account. And so anyhow, that's, that's what I got to say about that.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with a lot of that, but I think sometimes the fix to that is at the capital. We want, it's hard for me to punish a, a, a person trying to do a project and they can take advantage. And I, I, it sounds like, it feels like at times we end up punishing the wrong side. And the fix is really up in Olympia or Washington DC or wherever you want to, want to do it. So I struggle with that, just a hair. I don't, I don't think Olympia or DC should get into any business stuff. But I, I want to be careful. I'm not punishing people and, and taking them out of a chance to, to do something. I, I don't know.
Yeah, with. With your permission, the, the punishing is the sort of categorization that a group always likes to use. If you don't give somebody a free lunch, you're punishing them. If you don't give them this, you're punishing them. And the answer is no, you're not punishing them. You're just not punishing the taxpayer, because if anything is given to you from the government, it comes from the taxpayer. And the, the, the issue that I would, I would say to, to support your argument is more like we've come into the state where we think the government should fiddle with everything. And all of a sudden, I'm going to decide that we're not going to do that anymore. Well, that can be perceived as a backward and negative approach on someone. Reason I bring it up here is not to apply it specifically to this, but use that as a very traditional example of how we get bought.
Yeah, and once again, I'm not really disagreeing with that. I just, it's hard for me to tell people they can't use the tools that, that even if I disagree with the tools, that, that you can't use them. We're not going, we're not going to let you use them. And I, I'm not sure I'm, I can, I struggle with that a little bit, but.
So that's tomorrow, 9:45. Can't wait.
Well, I already said it, you're able to collect your costs. It's.
Yes.
Not a cost to.
Correct.
That's, that's the one thing you have tomorrow.
That's all I have for tomorrow. Thank you.
Public Works. Oh, I know what, what else I wanted to say, because I wanted to be real clear, back to the C-Pacer, is I know this individual, but I, I did some business with him at mortgage stuff at Fiber. He did some commercial business, but I, I don't let that, I work real hard not to let that in. I mean, over 40 years, I've known a lot of people that do business, business work. It's not unusual for me to be acquainted with those folks, so. Just upfront, I do know this individual, but.
Good morning again, commissioners. So on the agenda for tomorrow, the first motion item, item number nine, is a bid award to J.L. Stordahl for headquarters transportation of rock materials. We have a award, a couple of weeks ago, we opened this up and we had two bidders on it. They were very close. I don't know if you recall that. I believe they were within $300 with one another. So we're looking forward to, looking to move forward on this and award it for, just shy of $315,000. Now, this rock is used at the landfill for a multitude of things. Gas wells, haul roads, both inside and outside of the fill, access roads to our testing locations for monitoring wells and building tipping pads and things like that within the operation of the landfill. And this is a not to exceed value.
Yeah.
I'm good.
All right, thank you.
I remember that, that bid was pretty close. I was kind of.
Yeah. Closest one I've seen for that dollar value in a long time.
So, good morning. Our remaining two items for tomorrow are resolutions to authorize projects. Excuse me, the first one is for Delometer Road, two culverts at milepost 4.10 and 4.42. These projects are being funded through the PROTECT, which is promoting resilient operations for transformative, efficient and cost-saving transportation. So these are 100% funded program projects. And we're asking for the design and engineering for Delometer for a million dollars. The total estimated project at this time is $6.8 million. As you can imagine, these are not what a person typically thinks. As a culvert, these are two big boxes that are going to be replaced. The other resolution is also a PROTECT funded grant. This one is a little smaller. It is out on Gilmore Road, and it's a Studebaker Creek crossing. That is engineering and right-of-way for $600,000. And our total estimated project is $3.8 million, excuse me, $3.5 million.
I'm thinking of being nasty here and saying, could you elaborate on PROTECT?
On the PROTECT program, so I, I will.
No, I'm kidding.
I will certainly give you lots of information if you want.
It's, how do you define something like resilient operations for transformative, efficient and cost-saving transportation? That requires a crystal ball that is not available.
Oh, come on, that was probably three months' hard work by a group.
Well, I want the job as the, as the acronym czar.
So this acronym, acronym, it depends on which agency you're applying to, what they're counting as resilient infrastructure. So this money is, so these are all from the ILJA. And this was direct distribution to the state. And there was an agreement between the state, the, and the state county engineers and city, cities organizations that a portion of the money that went directly to the state was going to be competitive grants for the counties and cities. The state, the state, due to the salmon issues, has defined this money as fish barrier removal projects. So that is what these two projects are. On the federal level, the PROTECT money, we have applied for one through DOT, and we were unsuccessful. We were like third out, is generally flooding projects is what you're, they're looking for. So building resilient infrastructure, flooding projects, earthquake retrofits. That is what on the federal level is the projects where they're looking for. And so we would commit it, submitted a flooding, a road that's frequently flooding to upgrade the culverts and do a slight realignment. I know other jurisdictions were doing earthquake resiliency planning. So those were things that, on the federal level, they were aiming for.
You came prepared.
Unfortunately, that just floats around in my head.
A question on these two, the, so this pays for the engineering.
Yes, but the, the grants were awarded for the whole project.
The whole project.
Yes, we're just entering into the initial agreement, which is engineering. The way the state does it, you do the engineering. Once you're engineering and your right-of-way is approved, they will then obligate the money for the construction, but it's earmarked for your project.
And we're essentially 100% reimbursed?
On these, yes.
Even we take advantage of the programs.
Of course. Of course. But, but the only, the only thing that is substantially different is that this is, you know, it, it's a distinction I've made before. Whenever we support something that, say, improves access on exit 21 in Woodland, it's really available to everybody. There's no, you get this money. No, it's, everybody gets it.
And, and that's true. There is a distinction. And, and that's true. There is a distinction, but I just had to say it. One question for you, and it's nothing on this. I should have asked you when you were up before. Uh, how's Hall of Justice doing? Cause we've had, have you had any heat issues? I know Mike talked about really cranking it, so put on your coat when you come in, so it would last all day.
I, I know they were working on that. Um, I haven't had a chance to touch base this morning, yeah.
Make sure they were. Last year was not, not very good. We went through some of that, alright.
You were probably thinking, I've offered solutions with sticks of dynamite before. I wonder if that applies here too.
I think that'll work over there too.
I did want to give, yeah, I, I also wanted to give a little warning for the traveling public. Uh, overlay starts this week. Uh, this week they are doing night work, so please be careful when you're moving up and around. They're going to be working up on Barnes Drive by Space Age and on Headquarters Road. They're doing night work this week.
Well, I tell you that, uh, that road at Space Age was never developed for that. Those big trucks, all that kind of traffic there. It's, you guys have got some work on your hands, don't you? Yeah.
That they're going to be grinding it out and uh, putting a quite substantial overlay on that section.
So on something like that, where you know you're going to have frequent substantial heavy traffic, heavy truck traffic, does that mean that you, at some point you have to redo the base of the road?
Uh, yes, uh, if there is not a base in it, this is what um, happened down on Dyke Road. Cause Dyke Road was initially, you know, a skiff of gravel and then we just chip sealed it and overlaid it. Um, that road potentially has a better base because it is right off of the highway. Um, and just probably does not have as big of a structure. So yes, when we're doing designs for our materials and collectors, the pavement section is bigger with a bigger base and a thicker mat just to carry the truck traffic.
Thank you.
Next I see on the list is Sheriffson. I don't know if he's on. His, the stuff looks pretty straightforward. It's all under uh, agreements and contracts. It looked like it's just inter-local agreements for record services that we do after hours. I don't see anything, uh, and then one was the Kalatindian Tribe for uh, use of the uh, a range. I didn't see anything that was out of normal there. And I don't see anybody on the sheriff, so I don't think it's a, all looks pretty straightforward. I think, I think we're, we're charging all cities. I think Kalama, we're going to raise them the most. I'm teasing Mike. Anything else?
No, just a public comment if there is.
Anything from the public, you guys? I know Jessica had something at eleven today. Um, we can recess till then unless do you, if she's available earlier, we could relas- recess to ten thirty and maybe get her taken care of. Let's recess till ten thirty, see if we can get her in here, okay?
That's good.
Okay, we're back from recess going into human resources. Jessica.
Good morning, Jessica Warren, Human Resources. I have a few requests to fill this morning. The first one comes from Public Works requesting to fill an operator two in Kalama shop. Plus any domino effect from filling that position. The employee resigned they.
We had a resignation?
Yeah, they have a job at DNR.
Okay. I'm good.
Yep, and then I have a few requests from IT. The first is a request to fill the IT enterprise security analyst analyst position. And the employee put in his two weeks notice and is resigning this month.
Who who put in two week notice?
Erin Briggs.
Oh, yeah. Okay. I'm good.
Okay. Next one is request to fill the ERP business technical manager. The employee resigned the end of May. That was Carl Sampson.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. And then the next on the list is request to fill the enterprise application specialist slash developer position. This position was most recently filled back in February. For a short period of time and then previously it was filled by Brett Andrew.
I didn't catch that last.
Previously it was filled by Brett Andrew.
Okay. Yep.
Thank you. And then there is a vacant vacant position at network analyst. It was vacant effective January of this year. The request is to use this vacancy to fill as a systems analyst position. Which is salary grade two sixty five. We haven't had a systems analyst position build since Aaron Briggs previously held that position prior to his promotion.
Who had it?
Aaron Briggs previously was the systems analyst back in twenty twenty two.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, great. Those are all of my requests and then I have a executive session for performance of a public employee.
Okay. Estimate.
Uh, let's say ten minutes.
Okay. Excuse me, so recess to executive section, performance of a public employee. Okay, back from executive session, no decisions were made. I'll turn it back over to Jessica.
Jessica Warren, Human Resources. I have an additional request this morning to do a temporary ten percent pay increase to our ERP business technical manager Denise Van Riper. And this is due to additional duties that she's taken on due to a vacancy.
And we're doing it over a period of time. Do we expect to fill the fill the vacancy and then things will go back to normal?
We expect to fill the vacancy. So estimate is probably within six months, but we can reevaluate at that time.
It seems like a good idea to me. I'm good.
Thank you.
We're all done? Okay. See nothing else, we will adjourn.